All right, it's six o'clock. I'd like to call the January twenty-fourth Madison City Council to order, please. We have Pastor T- Tolliver with Cornerstone Word of Life Church here to lead us in prayer.
First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for the honor of doing this. Let's bow our heads in prayer. Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you that is the day that you have made and we will rejoice and be glad in it. Father, your word tells us in First Timothy, chapter two, that we are to pray for all men, kings and those that are in authority, that we might lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and honor, for it is right in your eyes so that all men can be saved and come to the knowledge of the truth. Father, tonight I pray specifically for Mayor Finley. I pray for our council members, Mara Robleski, Connie Spears, Teddy Powell, Greg Shaw, Renee Bartlett, Karen Denzen, and John Seifert, for your wisdom to know what to do, how to do, and when to do it. Father, I thank you for your counsel to help them, to guide them in every decision that they're making this evening. Father, we thank you for your divine protection over them and their families as they live their lives in service to our community. Thank you for your protection over our law enforcement, our agencies, our firefighters, our first responders, Father, those that who are on the front lines, those who are servicemen and women throughout our community. Father, I thank you for protection over our schools, our teachers, our administrators, and our students, and everyone throughout our community. We thank you for watching over us. We pray for your, their protection, but we also pray for your direction in our lives, for all those who are placed in positions of responsibility to make decisions for us. And so, Father, I thank you for your blessing upon the city of Madison. I thank you, Father, for the future that it has. I thank you, Father, for commerce. I thank you, Father, for growth and for foresight for these ones that are guiding us. And I thank you for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor. Would you please join me in the pledge? Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski? Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Here.
Councilmember Denzen?
Yeah.
Councilmember Seifert?
Here. And we have a quorum, so we'll move forward. Are there any amendments to the printed agenda?
I have one addition, and this is Resolution twenty-two forty-four R to allow the mayor to negotiate and execute a professional services agreement with Hugh Wright McInally Incorporated for Engineering Consulting Services. And this will go under the mayor's line, and that's located at five A six on the agenda.
If no other changes, we'll move forward with that. And I'll look for approval amendment of minutes from the January tenth.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? If not, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski? Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzen?
Motion passes. Next move into presentation and awards, and we'll start with Ms. Dorothy Havens with K-Tech.
Good evening. It's nice to see you. I want to first thank you so much for your support of K-Tech. K-Tech is in the proud city of Madison. We are a workforce initiative, part of the Kids to Love Foundation. We teach Megatronics, robotics, soldering, and virtual reality. And thanks to your funding, we added virtual reality last year. We launched the Virtual Reality Academy with the Bob Jones Engineering Group, and it was the first time that we had offered that program. We did it to test out the innovative program of virtual reality. Virtual reality is where we're teaching our students to create the virtual experiences. Those experiences are used in training. There are a lot of companies here that are using those. That was very successful, and we are offering Virtual Reality Academy again this year and requesting your funding support for the academy. We also have through this program developed college credit for our courses that we are teaching, and the college credit is good not only at the community college system level, but also at universities all over the United States. So, we're very excited about that. So, we'll be starting up the next Virtual Reality Academy on February first. We also, through our Megatronics program, have awarded through Megatronics Robotics and Soldering two hundred fifty-six, two hundred fifty-three certifications since we started in twenty sixteen, and we were honored to receive from the Alabama Automotive Association the Service Provider of the Year Award in twenty twenty-one for our work in the automotive industry. Proud to be part of Madison. Madison City Schools have been fabulous to work with. Madison officials, Paul Finley is one of our ambassadors. He's fabulous to work with. We are very proud to be part of Madison, and we thank you for your support.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Chip Cherry with the Huntsville Chamber.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. All right. Perfect.
Thank you.
Now, it's, it's an honor to be here tonight, and it's an honor to be a partner with you in, in growing our community as a whole. And I just want to give you a quick update on kind of where the progress that we're making as a community in our growth and diversification of our economy. First of all, our chamber has a hundred and seventy-two of our members' organizations are, are in the city of Madison, representing about eighty-one hundred employees and seven percent of our overall membership base. We serve as a, a lead for economic development in our community, and we're, as such, managing thirty-five projects to, at the current time, representing a potential four or five thousand jobs and, and four point eight billion dollars investment. There's a lot of very large projects that are floating around right now, and then, then that makes up a, a couple of projects make up the bulk of that. And the, your capture rate for a number of the projects that will be illustrated here in a minute is about fifteen percent of the workforce comes from the city of Madison when land a large project, and I have a couple of examples of that coming up. Over the last fourteen years, we have worked twenty-two expansions of two new locations in the city of Madison, resulting in five hundred and sixteen jobs and sixty-two million dollars in, in new direct investment. We greatly appreciate the partnership. Mayor Finley is, is part of our economic development team, as is the staff here, and we greatly appreciate your partnership and engagement. You participated in supporting us being able to secure the MTM project, and the good news is, next week, they will be, actually, this week, sorry, they'll be starting the line off of the, of the new Mazda vehicle, so that'll put both production lines in play. And you may have noticed during the national championship game, didn't go quite as expected, but nationally you saw the new Corolla Cross being advertised and that, and that vehicle's made right here in, in our community. That will result in six hundred of Madison residents being able to secure employment at MTM. Roughly nine hundred thousand dollars a year, that translates into tax revenue for the city here, which, if you calculate that over twenty years, is about eighteen million dollars. Amazon, well, so we have two projects with Amazon, and the impact is sixty-three new residents, or new jobs for residents in the city. About seventy-one thousand dollars a year in revenue, or one point four million dollars over the next twenty years. Blue Origin, a huge success, and when, in a minute, we'll get to the heat map of where people work, and you can see where, uh, your residents go to work, but Blue Origin was a significant investment for our community and our region, and actually putting the, the test stand back into action at the, at NASA on Redstone. Well, the smoking fire is a good thing, so we'll be able to see that hopefully soon when everything gets finished out there. That results in about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars when everything's ramped up in revenue to the city, and about three point four million dollars over a twenty-year period. Polaris, great partner in the community, and they, as they ramp up, two hundred thirty-five residents are anticipated to be working out there. A total of three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars a year, or seven point three million dollars over twenty years in additional revenue. And then GE Aviation's quite quietly tucked up there in Greenborough, but, uh, we anticipate thirty-five new resident, uh, thirty-five residents will be employed there. About fifty thousand dollars in revenue and one million dollars over the next twenty years. Next slide's the one I printed in the back, so you can actually see it, so you've got an extra slide of that, because I looked at it and I said, no way anybody's gonna be, unless you have really, really good eyes or strong, uh, glasses. This kind of just shows how interdependent that we are. You have, on a daily basis, an in-migration of fourteen thousand six hundred twenty-seven people into your workforce a day. You have two hundred eighty, uh, two thousand eight hundred sixty-nine people who actually live and work in the city of Madison, and then you have nineteen thousand three hundred sixty-nine people leave every day to go to work outside of your community. Actually, not outside of your city limits, but in our community. The next one is a very telling chart. Just shows the heat map of where the residents work. And it's kind of hard to believe that you have twenty-nine hundred people that actually go over fifty miles away to go to work, uh, but I just thought you might be interested in seeing that heat map and distribution. It just shows how interconnected our community is. If you start overlaying this with other communities, you start seeing that heat map kind of shows how connected we all are. And then our employment growth, you can see we've had a twenty-five percent employment growth in the city of Madison, kind of reflects kind of the growth of the community and what's been happening in retail and other employment opportunities in the city. So, a growth from two thousand seven to two thousand twenty-one of fifty-three, uh, hundred new workers in your community. So, we have three active projects out of the thirty-five that are considering, um, location here in Madison County. We present sites, working with your IDB and staff, uh, to make sure that we have an accurate representation of that. Probably the most submitted site that we've had is the one on Canyon Line Road that's owned by the UAH Foundation. So, a lot of activities going on, and I would say, just to point out again, that we would not be as successful as we are as a region in recruiting people nationwide, um, if it were not for you guys and the partnership that you have here. We have to recruit, we have about thirty-two people a day moving into the region. To meet all of our employment needs, we've got to get that number up close to fifty. And part of the overall attractiveness of the region is the blend of opportunities we have there, both for schools and communities that people can select as their home. And we market the entire region when we go out and sell projects. Be happy to entertain any questions. Thank you for the time.
Any questions?
Appreciate you, ep.
Thank, thank you so much. Next, we have Ms. Tina Clark from Madison Arts Council, uh, to talk about Christmas Card Lane.
Good evening, Mayor Finley, Council President Shaw, council members. I'm here tonight because I wanted to give out the awards for Christmas Card Lane. Uh, we have two cards that, that were the best for Christmas Card Lane this year. Um, there's supposed to be a picture. Can you guys, there you go. This card was a really good card. This one was done by Sandra Smith. In her design, "The Greatest to So Christmas Closing Line," as you can read up there. There's a special part of hers. It says that in the bottom stanza, she has a three. And I'm trying to find it. Do y'all see that three up there, a special?
Yes.
Yes. That is something that her grandfather started with her and her family, and it's supposed to mean I love you. So, that was kind of neat, what she did there, but I love this card. And Ms. Sandra, um, is our second place winner, and if she could come up here and get her, her award. I left it at home, thank you. I left it at home by accident. I was walking out, left it on the table. Goodness for cell phones and pictures. Okay, our next card, you can go ahead and flip that, the next card.
I'm working on it. I hear you.
There we go. This card was done by two high school students at James Clements High School. And Dr. Nichols is here tonight, 'cause he, I asked him if he would join us in giving these, uh, two young people their award. And if Ava and Walker can come up here. Now, their card, as you see, they incorporated, um, the trash pandas, little guy up there, and that was really neat. Their Christmas design says, "Christmas is our favorite time of the year, so it is fitting to have Rocket the raccoon in a sleigh riding all around Madison Huntsville with a 'Welcome to Alabama' sign to welcome travelers." And we're so glad that they decided to do this. And I got it right, you're juniors, right? Okay, so I expect you to do this again next year, right? Okay, good. And that's all that I had tonight. I was gonna make it short and sweet, and that was it, short and sweet.
Very good.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Tina.
Thank you so much, Tina. Uh, next, we have Commander Larry Vanoy for the Police Officer and Firef- and Firefighter of the Year.
Good evening. Good evening. All right. So, I'm commander of the American Legion Post, the Madison American Legion Post two-two-nine, and, uh, also the District Twelve Commander for the American Legion. I'm very happy here tonight to, uh, to recognize some very special individuals for the council and the mayor. Uh, I do want to bring out a word, though, of course, our sympathies, uh, to those prayers, to those police officers that have lost their lives very recently. It's a tragic event for this nation, a very embarrassing situation for this country, something we ought to deal with and we need to deal with. And my heart goes out to all those police officers and firefighters and all those others that provide public safety to our community. We wouldn't be this community we are, the country we are, without you. So, thank you very much. So, uh, our American Legion Post, about three hundred strong members, had a very successful oratorical contest this past weekend. Thanks to the generosity of the, uh, of the, of the city, of letting us use your facilities, we held that here yesterday and had some, five candidates that recite, um, recite a, a speech, a ten-minute, eight to ten-minute speech about the Constitution, and then they have another five-minute, three to five-minute speech that, uh, they had to present with a very short notice of what that topic's gonna be. That went out very well. We've had great successes within the community. It's, it's a county-wide event, and I, I've shared with you some of the successes we've had at Boy State and Girl State. Uh, we've also had, uh, last year, I mean, year, year before last, uh, a state winner for the oratorical contest as well from, from our community. So, kudos to those individuals that have such a difficult di- uh, time, or not difficult, but a very, uh, it's very taxing and hard to, to, uh, to put together a presentation before your peers and from other individuals that are doing this judging, but it's, it's a great event for the, what the American Legion does. Um, we also got a junior shooters, just real quick summarizing what's coming up real quick. We got a junior shooters program that's gonna be starting up, a competition taking place real soon. Uh, we got a, a drill team competition coming up. Uh, JROTC awards are happening here and within the next two months. American Legion Baseball's gonna crank up. We helped the city with a pitch-hit-and-run competition that happens this spring. So, there's just a few of the things that we're getting ready to do this, this early this year. But tonight, tonight, we're gonna recognize both a police department, uh, sorry, law enforcement officer and a firefighter of the year. Um, those two awards fall under a pillar. We've got four pillars. That pillar is the national security pillar, and it's a tenant of that pillar to recognize those individuals that excel within those two departments. Um, the American Legion gives its national law enforcement officer of the year to a well-rounded law enforcement officer who has exceeded the duty requirements that is expected of him in his or her position, and has demonstrated a distinct pattern of community service coupled with professional achievement. Tonight, I have Jean Downs, my vice commander. She's gonna read the citation for the Law Enforcement Officer of the Year, and following that, we'll do the, uh, Firefighter of the Year.
So, Jean?
Hi, everybody. This is the twenty-twenty-one Madison Law Enforcement Officer of the Year, Russ Owens. Russ started with the Madison Police Department in September of two thousand and six. Officer Owens was on patrol until August of two thousand and thirteen, and then he moved over to the traffic unit. After year in traffic, he was then assigned to the Investigations Division in the Street Crimes Unit in August of two thousand and fourteen. He was in the Street Crimes Unit until May of two thousand and nineteen. He was then de- assigned to the Madison County Drug Task Force as an agent. His work there consists of drug buys, arrests, search warrants, search warrants and seizures. He's been a very effective asset to the Drug Task Force. Russ Owens also became a member of the Madison SWAT team in February of two thousand and thirteen, where he still serves. As a detective for the Madison Police Department, Russ also takes crim- criminal calls and works everything from robberies to death investigations. Agent Owens was awarded the Life Saving Award in February two thousand and twenty-one after he and two other agents revived a fellow agent that had been exposed to fentanyl while working a case. He assisted in doing CPR and reviving the agent. Russ is an asset to the Madison Police Department, as well as the Madison County Drug Task Force. And it was noted that Russ has a fifteen-year-old son, Jet. Congratulations. I'm gonna read the citation. Twenty-twenty-one Madison Fire and Rescue Firefighter of the Year is Kenneth Howard. Ken and his wife, Kim, live in Madison with their two children, ages five and eight. Ken has been with the department for seven years. He served as a firefighter and paramedic for five years, and has served as driver engineer and paramedic for the past two years. When we asked our members for nominations for this award, we supplemented the request with selection criteria. The criteria included that the candidate would have demonstrated qualities of dedication, loyalty, service, and professionalism. This year, we received detailed written recommendations outlining all of these attributes for Ken from both his shift captain and our chief of special operations. Ken seeks out opportunities to help his shift, to improve his station, and to enhance, and to enhance our service delivery. As an example, to separate crews during COVID-nineteen, we moved our Station One Engine Company to the abandoned Public Works Facility on Celtic Drive. Ken was one of several members instrumental in making that site a working firehouse. He donated personal house O-limes to make it a nicer place, and worked hard to create a livable facility. To date, he has made and mounted the firefighter flag plaque that is in the dayroom at the station, and the fire hose flag that is in the kitchen of Station One. Ken asked to lead the retrofit of one of our used pickup trucks to serve as a first-response paramedic squad. This involved the design of equipment, placement, mounting brackets, mounting equipment, and troubleshooting the many items that needed repairs. This squad has been in service for a couple of months and has worked so well that we plan to keep it and utilize the platform for future squads. Ken is an accomplished driver engineer, proficient firefighter, and often the lead paramedic at incidents. This past year, he supervised the paramedic orientation program for three of our shift's new medics, helping to ensure excellent service for our citizens. Additionally, he serves as one of our SWAT team medics, and serves on the Public Safety Unmanned Aircraft System Program, or Drone Program, as the lead ground support team member. And then finally, I have a quote from Chief Bailey. "Ken's experience, his calm demeanor no matter the circumstances, his work ethic, and his positive spirit had led him to be a tremendous asset for his shift, for the department, and for the citizens of Madison. We're very fortunate to have him in our ranks. I want to congratulate driver engineer Ken Howard on this well-deserved award of Madison Firefighter of the Year for twenty-twenty-one."
Hey, to everybody in the Legion, we certainly appreciate everything you guys are doing, and there's, you can hear those activities. You guys are putting a ton of effort into that in our city, and we truly appreciate it. Thank you, guys, all for what you're doing.
Thank you so much. All right, next is public comments, and the only one we have signed is Ms. Jackie Reed.
This is a new bunch that I've come to. I used to come all the time, and, but I appreciate you, Mayor Finley. All you new city council members, I hadn't known. I used to never miss a meeting here. But I appreciate you, and good to see you, glad to know you. I'm from Huntsville, you know. But I really stand up for Madison, too. Big part of Madison. I guess my son was finding me some news the other night to write in Speaking Out News. I write in a black newspaper called Speaking Out News, and I had to call him for fifteen years. He never caressed me when I wrote the paper. And politics is what it's all about. Maybe that's bad. But anyway, I came out here and my son pulled up, I didn't get a paper Sunday, and I was trying to find something to write about, and I hit the wrong thing. Madison's trying to hire a city manager. It hit me wrong, and I've been on it ever since then. And you know, I've been out here when Trulock and Wells was out here. Both of them was out here, and they tried to do the same thing. I mean, to the committee meetings, they tried to do the same thing. But I don't think that the public is involved enough. We got all this going over in Huntsville. I call our, our man a city manager, and he's administrative assistant, but I call him a city manager over there, and they don't like that because I know what they stand for. But, but the mayor is the people, the one that they vote for, the public. They hold him accountable, and they hold you all accountable. And a professional, to me, is some of the good old boy system. Some of the developers, it's the wrap-up system. But, but you need to make good administrative assistants to say here to give you presentations, like kept up up there. But, but up there, battle to sit there and don't do what I think you have to do. We got people giving presentations, and all they do is hurry up and vote, and we are ruining Huntsville. I'm sorry. You don't live in the big city like that. I love Huntsville. I've been here since nineteen and, uh, fifty-eight, and I've seen run for mayor nine times and hadn't been kicked out yet. But anyway, and I love politics, and I love the people, and I love the people that run, 'cause you've got a tough job. It's a tough job. It really is. But I feel it like a administrative assistant with you all checking them all out. For Mayor Finley, it's better than a city manager. I can't go along with that title, city manager, and everything I read in here just turned my hair gray. I, I may have to dye it again, but I have a problem. I'd like to go to the committee meeting. I've been to the others when Wells and Trulock came to the committee. I saw all these big dogs sitting there at that meeting, trying to tell them how to run it. But the public, the public- But I love you all, I'll be back, but I'm not through that city manager thing yet. Y'all think a lot about it before you do it. A professional is just a good old boy system. Somebody put him there for a reason, don't let that happen. Y'all, y'all be responsible for your jobs. Let him have administrative assistance and help him. And Madison is doing great and doing good, and I helped you all try to get that, um, outfield.
Yes, ma'am. Glad to wrap it up, Ms. Reed.
Okay. I helped y'all get that outfield because battle's going to take it away from us if we hadn't voted on it. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, Ms. Reed. Thank you. If anyone else would like to address counsel. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Ed San, Mayor Finley, good to see you again.
See you, too, Ed.
I know I emailed the majority of you about our endeavor of Joe and I trying to get this international squad here to play in international soccer against our girls here in Madison City. So I'm just basically here to answer any questions that you have or anything like that, but I want to bring Joe, our Director of Coaching, who's going to be head, spearheading this, to ensure that this great endeavor of these Polish girls coming down here to see what we do here, and to be effective in the education tour here, and also the cultural enlightenment of what they want to do here also. Joe?
Yes, thank you again for your time. That's what it's all about for us, is just realizing what we have not seen or paved the way for Poland this year, and maybe again next year, but this is a professional team that, if you think about it, like, not quite as big as like our Tennessee Titans, but if we had a professional team in Alabama, and they didn't play in the NFL, but they played, like Alabama would be playing in a league just before that, that's what they have. So they have not the money to fund these girls and these players that want the growth, that want to see the education side, so we've been looking to see how to factor that into the schools with the tours, and they don't have soccer in their educational life. They don't have sports. They have sports in schools all like this, where you actually have it together. It's a student athlete that helps. So we want to really show that side of it, and for the actual soccer side of it, we want to be sure that they, we can compete. So that's where it brought me on, to make sure we have a good base, which we do, have been around this club team for a long time, so we still talk, and we can give the girls exactly what they need for competition, but also to see, we have good girls, role models here, that can show them what that student athlete means, and give that international enlightenment for she's, uh... And in our financial projection, again, hopefully there's some questions and stuff, but it shows we just, the money upfront is what we would need help for, and then the permission to use some of the city facilities, so we can see this as a Madison City-driven project, not a, they do, uh, we have ways to make sure that everything's legit, been running the non-propabilization Madison since 2017 by myself, been helping with AYSO since 2009, so we can use those as monetary ways to see that the money's fit, and then once we raise the money, as you can see, the way the revenue sources, we'll have a net there, and we also get really high. We did do some legwork to make sure we had, these numbers aren't numbers we made up, we actually made calls, and got in bids from bus drivers, and hotels, and restaurants, and so these are things we actually know prices of, and so that's our best sort of projection budget I'm thinking of.
Thank you for your time, Lee. Thank you all so much.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. If anyone else, now we'll close public comments and move into the shortest consent agenda I've ever seen in five years.
It is, and our finance committee meeting was also short. Finance committee met last week on January 18th. We've independently reviewed the bills that were paid, and I want to present the consent agenda, but I want to say a thank you to those who have submitted donations to the city, St. John Baptist Catholic Church, to support our Mass Nutrition Program at the Senior Center. We also have another private donation from the Senior Center. And then the Madison County Commission has made a significant donation to the Kids Kingdom Project, $25,000, and also helped support our police in purchasing a Ford Explorer. So with that, I'd like to move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion? Now, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving to presentation and reports, and we'll start with the mayor.
All right, and we're going to start with the Proclamation for National Mentoring Month. Get that up there. Anybody here to help with this one? There we go. So let me read this real quickly, as, come on up and stand with me, and I'll give you a chance to talk about it. We did this last time with Big Brothers and Big Sisters, who is someone, again, this year that we supported. So, National Mentoring Month, whereas everyone remembers someone special, a neighbor, teacher, relative, or friend who ignited and/or defended our potential. And whereas one way to return the favor is to mentor a child, every adult has something to offer an hour a week, can make a big difference in the child's life, mentor does not have to change his or her life to change a child's life. So, and I think one of the last things that it says here, whereas research has shown that children engaged in the one-on-one, professional-supported mentoring programs like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, are more likely to finish high school, less likely to begin using drugs and alcohol, less likely to skip school, or be involved in violence. And so, whereas in Madison, Alabama, there are many young people who want and would benefit from this, whereas January has been designated as National Mentoring Month, I, Paul Finley, Mayor of the City of Madison, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2022 as National Mentoring Month in the City of Madison, and I'm happy to present this to you.
Thank you.
And then I will give you just a couple of seconds, if you'd like to, to talk a little bit about it.
Um, Big Brothers, Big Sisters is, well, it's dear to my heart. This is my third agency. We are working to do some school-based programming in Madison. We've actually been approached by the schools for this, but you all have graciously supported our endeavors to also initiate the Bigs in Blue program here. We're going to get Dave back, his little, kind of left the program, so we're going to get Dave back. But that is the idea of using first responders as role models, and so that the kids that we work with sometimes don't necessarily see them as the enemy anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I appreciate all you guys do.
Thank you so much.
All right, and then I think our second proclamation is Casey in the Junior League of Huntsville, and it is for the Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And as you guys come on up here, I'm going to read a little bit of this. I brought my glasses in, I don't even use them, so I don't know why I've got them. Um, but this is, all of these are important, but I think this is one that became more relevant in the City of Madison even last year. But whereas, human trafficking is a very real problem facing the world today, although it can take many forms, including debt bondage, forced marriage, slavery, and commercial sexual exploitation, in every case, it goes against the core principles of individual freedom and civil rights that our state and nation stand for. The City of Madison, Alabama is committed to ensuring that our community remains on the front lines in combating this deplorable crime. And I'll read the next paragraph of whereas, due to the secretive and illegal nature, it is difficult to accurately quantify the extent of human trafficking. However, the U.S. Department of State estimates that anywhere between 600,000 and 800,000 people are trafficked across international borders each year. Just think about that for a minute, 600,000 to 800,000. Most victims of human trafficking are women or children who have been marginalized or isolated from society. The difficulty in grasping the full scope of this problem can be furtherly compounded because people often turn a blind eye to it. So whereas, we ask all residents of this community to join in us in raising the visibility of this crime, whose victims are all too often invisible, together we can become informed about the pressing issue and work to combat this, these injustices. So now therefore, I, Paul Finley, Mayor of the City of Madison, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2022 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and I'm happy to present this to you guys.
Hi, my name's Casey McCabe. I am the co-chair for Abolish, which, with the anti-sex trafficking, with the Junior League of Huntsville. This is a relatively new program that the Junior League Huntsville has taken on. Luckily, we are very well-directed by the Junior League of Birmingham, and we have been working with all of the agencies, governmental and non-governmental, to help bring awareness. And just alone in the City of Madison, we basically have, do you guys know, like on the gas stations, whenever you pull up and you're getting gas, and there's kind of different advertisements? So now there will be phone numbers, so victims of sex trafficking can make a phone call if they need to, and other awareness programs within the community. So we just appreciate your support, and we're excited to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
All right, next step would be, if we could, please, to ask for council approval of Resolution Number 2022-007-R, approving the annual appropriation agreement with K-Tech, a workforce initiative of Kids to Love Foundation, for their FY22 appropriation, the amount of $5,000 to be paid from the general operating account.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and I've been to those meetings where they give out those scholarships to those folks. It really truly is continuing to make a difference, and workforce development's critical, and that leads me to Chip and them at the Huntsville Chamber, because they continue to create the jobs, and ask for your support of Resolution Number 2022-08-R, approving the annual appropriation agreement with Huntsville Chamber of Commerce for their FY22 amount of $35,000 to be paid from the general operating account.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and I've been to those meetings where they give out those scholarships to those folks. It really truly is continuing to make a difference, and workforce development's critical, and that leads me to Chip and them at the Huntsville Chamber, because they continue to create the jobs, and ask for your support of Resolution Number 2022-08-R, approving the annual appropriation agreement with Huntsville Chamber of Commerce for their FY22 amount of $35,000 to be paid from the general operating account.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Again, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Chip, we always appreciate it, thank you. All right, so next is a first reading for your all's support and ordinance Number 2022-21, and its restrictions on the delivery of unsolicited written materials. And just to make sure that we would let folks know, anyone who on a Tuesday or Thursday or whatever day it is in the City of Madison who receives that yellow, kind of orange packet at their driveway that's packaged as a newspaper but really is nothing but ads, this would get away and do away with that, give us some teeth to then say, no, thank you, that's not the way that we present data. We'll get more on that next council meeting for you to, if you would like to ask any additional questions. Megan has helped me accomplish that, and we took, I think, one they did in the City of Athens, and made it a little bit more Madison-like, but I think this would give us the opportunity to say, thank you, but no, thank you. Lastly, we'll go to the request for Resolution Number 20, 2022-44, and its resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a professional services agreement with Pew Wright McInally Incorporated.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion?
Well, let me start by saying this, that I can't tell you how much we appreciate Michelle and the team that is in engineering, doing everything they can right now, but we have so much going on in this community, that what this would give us, the ability to do, is have someone on call that we already have contractual agreements with, that Michelle and her team could utilize, Mary Beth could utilize, in accomplishing many of the things that need to be done to continue to keep those things moving forward.
Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, guys. Two other quick things, it's always great to see Jackie Reed here. We, you know, we did Ole Mass and Pike, so she could easily get here, so Jackie, we've done that for you, but she's, when it comes to the Governance Transition Committee, nothing has been approved. As a matter of fact, if you'd like to obtain more information from the committee on why they put, made their recommendations at the last council meeting, we have a work session this coming Wednesday night at 5:30, and that will be one of the topics, where the group will give their full report, and one of the folks from the group will be here to answer council's questions, so you can get more information on that. And then at that point, we also, Megan would be talking about if council were to choose to move forward in either one of those directions on the two things that they proposed, how the city would legally accomplish that. So that's on next Wednesday at the work session. And also, a week from Wednesday, February 2nd, is the first meeting for the community of our comprehensive plan, it's Madison On Track 2045. And our goal there is to put a plan in place that helps Madison as we look basically 20 years out, and the community is how we get the most information. So next Wednesday, 5:30 here in these chambers, where you, as a community, can learn what we're trying to accomplish, and how you in turn can share the information you want us to have, to then be able to put the plan in place to manage this city in the best possible way we can. With that said, Greg, it's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. As far as out, we'll go to District Number Two.
Okay, I just wanted to bring to light, we had such an overwhelmingly great response when we asked for people to sign up for the Madison Police Advisory Commission, that I wanted to bring to light, we have a lot of other committees and commissions that citizens serve on and are appointed by either the mayor or the council. And in the next, between the expired terms that we currently have available, and the open seats, and the ones that are coming up in 2022, there are a little over 40 openings that are going to happen. We had, like I said, an overwhelming success in when we asked for people to apply for the Madison Police Advisory Commission. I'd love to see that kind of excitement about our others. I mean, we've got Planning Commission, we've got the Industrial Development Board, we've got the Beautification and Tree Board, the Cemeteries Board, we have all kinds, the Board of Education, we've got all kinds of different things, and I would encourage you to go to the Madison City website and look under the tab that says Boards and Committees, and just do a little, you know, work, seeing if there's a spot for you. And if there's not a spot for you, maybe you're there so that you can encourage some other good person to apply for a committee, when you see that that would be something that they would be a perfect fit for. But I'd just like for y'all to know that there are a lot of opportunities for you to be involved, and this is an easy way to get involved with our city. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Connie. District Number Three?
I know business.
District Number Five?
Okay, I had mentioned that we had a finance committee on January 18th, and we discussed two resolutions that I'd like to bring before the council for your approval. The first resolution is Number 2022-41-R, and that's a travel training and reimbursement policy for city council members. Prior to today, the city council members were not governed by the travel policies that the city was following, so we thought it was a good idea to put a policy in place that had clear guidance in terms of what we could do and how we would get approvals for travel.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion to second. Is there any discussion? Now, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. The second resolution is number 2022-43-R, and that's a revision of the city's current travel training and reimbursement policy for employees. We were trying to bring it up to date with some of the real costs of travel, and so there were some minor edits, and I present that for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Can can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky. Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay. And then I'm pinch-hitting for Councilmember Roblesky, who's asked me to share her shop, Local Spotlight. This time, it's on Cine Planet 15. I'm just gonna read, uh, the paragraph she sent to me. This is Madison's one and only movie theater. They recently underwent a huge renovation, and every seat is now a large luxury recliner. Every Tuesday is $5.00 day, where every showing is only $5.00 per person, and she thinks it would be a perfect venue for Valentine's Day, and don't forget the popcorn. You can visit their website, uh, for movies and showtimes. And finally, I wanted to share with you that, uh, in February, uh, the first Saturday in February, February 5th, uh, we're going to be holding the Rookie Rally Chess Tournament at Mil- at Mill Creek Elementary, and I'm bringing this to your attention because it is being sponsored and supported by State Senator Tom Butler. And then, on February 12th, Madison's going to be hosting the All-Girl State Chess Championship at Hexagon, and that is being sponsored and supported by State Senator Arthur Orin. I'm very appreciative of our state senators, as they, uh, support , uh, the chess program here in Madison, and that is it.
Thank you very much. District Number 6.
Hi. I'd like to report on my, my involvement with the liaison that I do. The first one is the Senior Center. Uh, I wanted to inform you that the Senior Center is closed right now. They're doing some heavy cleaning in there, um, because of all the COVID cases right now. So they are closed, and because of that, also, the meals and wheels are not being delivered. So if you know of anybody that lives that's a neighbor of yours, um, nobody's checking on them either. So if you can just kind of be neighborly, and and just make sure that some of these people are, um, are doing okay during this time. The, uh, it'll be closed until February 1st. So it's still a little bit of time yet that these people are on their own. So if you are a neighbor, please do consider checking in on them. Um, also, Madison Street Festival. Yes, we are definitely planning on doing the Street Festival this year. We're all excited. Our first meeting is gonna be this coming Wednesday. There are lots of opportunities for serving on this. Um, but put it on your calendar, first Saturday in October. And I do wanna highlight that we are not just, it is just a great fun day, but we also are a huge fundraiser. Um, we are working on getting our 501(c)(3) right now. And, um, I don't know how many people know this, but since, uh, 2012, we have given back $64,000 to the community in, uh, education grants. So besides a great thing, it is, uh, it is helpful to the community. So, but we really are planning on doing it this year, I promise. Um, also, Tree Beautification Board. On Saturday, we spent hours going over all the posters for the Arbor Arbor Day. And I just wanna commend all of the children. There were 565 posters from the schools in Madison, fifth graders only. They put in so much work. They are wonderful posters. We, um, we had to pick the top four from each school, and then, uh, number one from each school will go on to state competition. But, um, I just wanted to bring it forward that the students are just, they're wonderful artists, and the ideas are wonderful. And we will be presenting their, the winning things in the end of February, I believe, is when we'll have it at the city council. To just, just give these kids the credit. And also, I wanna thank the teachers and the schools that supported this, because without them, it couldn't have happened. Um, also, we did have the Madison Police Citizen Advisory Committee meeting last week. Uh, tie-in with what Mayor Finley talked about with the, uh, human trafficking awareness. A Officer Josh McCready from the Department of Homeland Security came and spoke. It was so educational. It was very eye-opening to me. Uh, if you see something and it doesn't look right, say something about it. These things just, they just go right underneath the radar, and it is just, it's so tragic for the victims. So really, just be aware, there are gonna be opportunities to learn more about this human trafficking issue. Um, but I really appreciated, uh, Josh McCready's words. Um, and especially with the the cellphones, and kids having these cellphones. It's so easy for them to get caught up in things that they don't know business being in. And finally, the, uh, the MCAC, they're starting a newsletter, and if anybody would like to receive the monthly newsletter, all you have to do is contact Rebecca dot Madison C-A-C, uh, at gmail dot com, and she will put you on the newsletter. One other thing, um, to me, it's very important that the citizens have a voice, and that their voice be heard. So there are two road projects in my district, District 6, that are going to have public hearings. Okay, the two projects are the Roundabout at the intersection of Eastview and Victoria, and also the extension of Sunset Sunset Boulevard that will connect to Hughes. So there's no date set for either of these, um, initial stages yet. But if you live in these areas, please be aware that this is gonna be happening, but there will be a public hearing. So come and voice. Um, Michelle is great. She has been listening. Uh, just for the Eastview one alone, there's been 19 citizens that have written into her, saying what their concerns are, and she is listening. So, um, it's just so important, I believe, for the citizens to be involved with these things in their city. So, uh, that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. District Number 7.
One thing I've got, I wanna thank Chief Bailey and Chief Williams, uh, for their work with HEMZI. I don't think it's ready for, uh, bring forward yet, but they're working hand-in-hand with them to, uh, obtain a couple of their, uh, box-mount, uh, ambulances, uh, that will help aid our, uh, folks in servicing citizens of Madison. So understanding with HEMZI, um, they're, they don't al- I don't say they don't always come to our calls, but our guys, our folks are there, uh, a lot of times, a lot quicker than they are. And I think Chief's, uh, understanding that, and working hand-in-hand with them to to see how we can better serve the citizens. So, um, and I can't remember, I don't wanna say there's costs, I can't remember, but bottom line, there's a lot of coordination there going on, and, uh, I thank their leadership and and working through that. So, um, that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Um, next is, uh, Board Committee and Appointments, and we have a few tonight, and we'll start with, uh, Madison Station Historic Preservation Commission. Place number one. Who's is that?
No, is it Mara?
Oh, I can do it. Um, first, first point is for Place 1. It's, uh, Opie Balch, and that'll be a term to serve four years.
Is there anyone, is there anyone else we want to, uh?
Not for Place 1.
If not, we will place Opie Balch in in Place 1?
Um, and Place Number 2, um, is Dennis Vaughn, and he's served on the committee for quite a long time, and it'll be also a reappointment for him.
Is there any other nom- nominations?
And finally, um, Zoning Board of of Adjustments and Appeals is Ms. Betty Fletcher, um, Place 1. She's been there quite a long time, and she's, uh, it's for reappointment. She's done an excellent job, and I'd like to reappoint her as well.
All right. Anybody opposed to that? All right. That's it. Next is public hearings, and I'll have to recuse on this first one. And, John?
You're analyzing.
While they queue this up, uh, your first item is gonna be Proposed Ordinance Number 2021-367, and this is to rezone, uh, property that's located on Sullivan Street. And we, yeah, there we go. Um, so the property's at 4084 Sullivan. It's just under an acre, and the request is to rezone this property from B1, which is our neighborhood business district, to B2, which is our community business district. Does it's on? Reboot it.
Switch the next one to, please. There you go.
Okay. Uh, the property, um, is, uh, located across from the downtown, kind of, um, just across from, uh, Bradley Street. It is developed with an approximate 8,000-square-foot building. You can see it there in the, uh, photograph. Uh, there is two tenant spaces. Uh, there's an existing tenant, which is On Point Dance Ware, which is facing Sullivan, and then there is a vacant tenant space, um, off of Gin Oaks, or to the rear of the building. The property is zoned B1, which is that lighter pink color. Um, it previously, it had been zoned B2. Um, as you can see, surrounding the property is, uh, B1 and B2. So just a little, um, history in terms of the zoning for this area. Back in 2013, the city decided it wanted to see investment in downtown Madison. And in recognition of the fact that the parcels in downtown Madison are smaller, not conventional commercial parcels that you might see along Hughes or County Line or Highway 72, it decided to retool the B1 regulations that the city has. And so it changed those regu- regulations to be more neighborhood commercial, um, more in recognition of goals of the city for the downtown area, the smaller parcels, and so forth. And so, um, in doing that, in changing the standards, they went about and changed the zoning for a portion of the downtown. And you can see that area highlighted in yellow. It's on the east side of Sullivan Street, and it included Bradley Street at the time. Um, there was a conversation going on about zoning the entire downtown area, but it was a process, given the number of property owners and so forth. So there was a follow-up action in 2014, and that follow-up action included the areas, uh, most of those areas in red, um, in Main Street, Church Street, and Sullivan Street, in which those properties were then changed to B1 zoning. And that was the time in which the subject property and the two properties directly north of it were also changed to B1. So they were changed from B2 to B1. Um, downtown, previously, it had a mixture of residential zoning primarily. Uh, and again, the the goal of changing the zoning on the west side of Sullivan Street was to create a buffer, and really to kind of look at ways to expand the downtown footprint, if you will, and to make sure that whatever was developing on the west side of Sullivan was going to be consistent with the city's goals for the downtown itself, and the historic nature of the downtown. So, the B1, so the applicant has requested to change this property B2, um, because they wanna have a tenant that's not allowed in the B1 regulations. They wanted to, uh, put, they want to put a laundromat, um, in the, um, vacant tenant space at the building. B1 regulations do not allow laundromats. Um, however, the B1 regulations do allow for a variety of uses. They allow for restaurants, brew pubs, office, retail. So, um, from staff's perspective, there are a lot of different tenant options for this building, whereas there are vacant spaces. Um, the B1 regulations, as I mentioned, do not allow for laundromats. Um, and there are a number of uses, which, when the city revised the B1 regulations, they, um, removed that permitted uses. So that would exa- uh, for example, would be a car wash. Uh, any drive-through option, laundromats. There was a series of uses that the city decided were not commensurate with the goals that the city had for the downtown area. And so B1 is a much narrower, um, list of uses, if you will, than B2. The B2 regulations allow for car washes. They allow for vehicle sales. Um, they allow for drive-thrus, and they allow for laundromats. B2 zoning is the type of zoning that you see on Hughes Road, you see on County Line Road, um, and I would say in a a typical commercial setting throughout the city. Um, staff is cons- uh, staff is concerned about diluting and reducing the downtown node and allowing for uses, even though it's on the other side of Sullivan, that are not gonna advance the city's goals. So while we're not opposed to a laundromat per se, we wouldn't want a car wash, or, you know, a drive-through restaurant going across the street on Sullivan Street, opposite historic buildings, and opposite of pedestrian character that we're trying to create. Um, so we think that rezoning the area on the west side goes contrary to what the city did back in 2014, um, and really would undermine, um, the city's goals for the area. Um, and I would note, as I mentioned, we're certainly not opposed to laundromats, but, um, I did a quick look on Google, and there's one laundromat in the city, and it's only a one mi- just over a mile away from this property. So, um, one of the things that the applicant had made, um, a statement at the Planning Commission was that, you know, there would be a need for a laundromat in the area. Um, and I found it interesting that the only laundromat in Madison is relatively close to this property. It's just off of, um, Arlington, um, near where old, uh, the pottery, old-time pottery is, um, behind the Wells Fargo. Um, we have a lot of dry cleaners throughout the city, but there is only one laundromat. That comes up in Google, um, that I could find. So, staff is not recommending, um, the approval of this zoning map amendment. Uh, when we went to the Planning Commission, um, the Planning Commission did vote four to three to support the change. However, um, after the meeting, one of the commissioners, um, did tell me that they, their vote was in error, because we weren't supporting it. So when they voted in support of the motion, they thought they were supporting staff's recommendation. But under Roberts' Rules of Order, motions are made in the affirmative. So the motion was made to approve it, and they voted for it, but they thought they were voting against it. So the record is that it got approved by Planning Commission from a four-three vote, but again, the the Planning Commissioner, after the fact, said that their vote was in error. Uh, I believe the applicant is present. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Um, I, well, the final comment would be, other than the applicant, we didn't have anybody come to the Planning Commission hearing.
All right. Thank you, Mary Beth. Well, that would like to open the public hearing. Anyone liking to come forward and speak on the matter? Um, I think from developer, we'll give a little bit of extra time per our policy. Uh, anyone else will get, uh, five minutes, so.
Um, and I brought these, and y'all probably don't. It's just a copy of the subdivision and-
Thanks, sir.
My, my name is Tommy Johnson. I was the original developer of the Gin Oak subdivision, and, uh, what we would, I mean, if if you didn't approve the, uh, the change of zoning, which I understand, is there a way that, uh, a variance could be approved, so that this facility could be opened, um, in this, in this space that I have? Um, and we've worked with the city of Madison, and I I hadn't thought about this in years, but, uh, when you have the event downtown, we've got 67 parking places, and we've always opened it up for y'all to use them, so.
Well, we appreciate that.
So, but anyway, we, uh, I actually did this development in 1987, and then we built the original building in 1997, 24 years ago, um, for the Kids Freedom Station. And then we opened our second location of Johnson Pool out here, when it closed. Then we, uh, put, Point Dance rented half of it, and now we've got this other second half. So. You got any questions?
I don't know, sir. I don't-
Okay. And and, uh, Richard Compton is here. If you got any questions about, 'cause the word laundromat, a a lot of people have one thing in mind, and this one that they're putting there is, uh, um-
Richard, you can answer a lot of questions, if you have any, that it's more of a up-to-date and very modern, and they actually even got room there, where if, uh, somebody had students with them, they can actually have a place to study while they're there. So.
I know that I have a lot to add. Um, I don't think we were aware of the fact that the vote was in error before, and we also thought that this was not for a zoning change, that it was for a variance to allow that particular use there, since the the planning group didn't have any objection to that use. So I was really surprised tonight, when it was saying that this was a request for the change of the the zoning. We understood that these other uses would would not maybe be what you'd wanna have there. You wouldn't wanna have a drive-through in a, in a walkabout area. Um, so, the the thing that's being put in there, the infrastructure alone is about a half million dollars before they put the equipment in. They're gonna have a study room for children, you know, to to be doing their their lessons. I don't have any financial interest in that that operation. Uh, I have one of those identical operations, except it's not large enough to accommodate the the, uh, kids' study room, uh, in a shopping center that I have in Athens, and I'm very happy with the way that turned out. Uh, I turned down, uh, 44 CBD stores, uh, in favor of, um, and I've got a, uh, an Athens Nutrition Store, and then I've got Hibbs', and and pizza, and nails, and potatoes, you know. But, um, uh, we were kind of surprised, I think, tonight, that this was, we didn't intend for it to be a change of zoning. We were hoping that we were gonna have a variance that would allow this particular use there. Um, people that are doing it are very responsible, and they have done a lot of things throughout the entire- throughout the entire metropolitan area. And I don't know where we go from here. Um, and I didn't actually expect to speak tonight, but, um, hello. And I've got a minute and thirteen minutes, a minute and thirteen seconds that I don't need. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak to council on this? All right, with that saying now, we'll, uh, close the public hearing and open council for any thoughts or emotion.
Move to approve. So that's, that's a, in the affirmative. We're voting to approve it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Comments from the council?
So, I guess, you know, right off, uh, this is actually in my district, so naturally I'm concerned about how it does affect downtown and that walkability, walkability type thing, getting traffic in and out of there. Um, is there enough parking even for, for something like this in that area?
Oh, we would have to evaluate the, the parking. Uh, we haven't evaluated the use because this is just, uh, for a zone change.
Right.
So, I, I, I don't know. There's quite a bit of parking on the property, but it may be fine, but don't know.
Well, I mean, I guess for that use, for, for going to-
Yeah. Um, I wouldn't expect there would be a parking issue there.
When you talk variance versus, can you give us an idea of what that would look like if they were to vote no and then let them come back to try to get a variance?
Yeah, that, that's not an option, but, um, so we actually had met with them, um, at the very beginning of this project. They had submitted, or someone submitted a building permit to put a laundromat in. And we caught that and said, well, a laundromat's not a permitted use. So we actually met with Mr. Crunkleton, Mr. Johnson, and went over what their options were. We just, we explained the fact that use variances are not allowed, um, and that their two options were to change the zoning or to change the zoning text. So changing the zoning is, is what they're, the, the action that they chose, which is to change the property back to B-two zoning. To change the text, uh, which was another option we described to them, they could have pursued a text amendment whereby laundromats might be allowed in B-one zoning under certain circumstances, right? You have to be located, for example, on an arterial, or you have to have X-size property. Our goal would be to make sure that a laundromat wouldn't locate on Main Street in downtown. We wouldn't think that would be the highest and best use, right, in downtown, or on Martin Street for that matter. Um, and so those were the two options that they had. Um, they chose to pursue the zoning, um, map amendment. Um, and I believe we also had conversation at the planning commission about these options as well. Um, but use variance isn't allowed by law, yeah.
Make sure we got that, yeah?
Yeah.
Could we put up the map that you showed with the pink, um, region?
I would if I, I could. I'm, um, not in control of-
Okay.
-the wheel tonight. Uh, let's go back one, please. And another, and another, and another. That one?
Okay, yes. So the portion that, could you point to the portion that we're looking at that, um, is the-
The, this-
Right the other way, if you would.
I'm sorry?
That way.
Behind you.
Yeah.
Outline in yellow.
Okay, so, so if you were to change it from B-one to B-two,
Mm-hmm.
does that mean everything that's in pink would have to change?
No, um, only that property. So all this before you is that rectangle this evening. Um, our, and the property did used to be zoned B-two. Um, but in our analysis, again, as, you know, we're concerned about undoing what the city decided it wanted to do back in twenty-fourteen when it changed the zoning, trying to, um, enhance the downtown area. Um, and also, we view it as a domino. In other words, you know, the property to the north, somebody could come along and want to rezone that property. It may not happen. Um, and certainly, we wouldn't recommend denying this just because of what might happen. We think on its own, it's, it's, it's not something we should support. But it, it is, it was worth mentioning, right? That, um, if you find that rezoning this property to B-two makes sense, it sort of begs the question why the other two properties couldn't be rezoned. And we're just concerned about what is going to, again, potentially locate across the street, especially that corner property, which is rather undeveloped, right? It's underdeveloped, I should say. Um, we wouldn't want a car wash to go there. We wouldn't frankly want a drive-through restaurant to go there. Um, again, we're not opposed to laundromats per se. It's just the, the location and all of the other uses that come with B-two zoning that we have a problem with.
And could you remind me what is to the north of this square?
There is a, um, a service garage, pardon?
It's, it's, uh, the Express Oil-
Yeah.
Tire or-
Yeah.
Oil place?
Right, and so that, I'm sorry.
Was that grandfathered in?
It is, yeah. So it's considered a, a legal non-conforming use, and they get to continue on. And, you know, obviously that use, or that property could recycle. If it recycled to something else, it would comply with the B-one zoning. But right now, it gets to continue as is.
So if it no longer functions as a tire oil place-
Mm-hmm.
-then it would have to, the next, the next development would have to be B-one unless we change it?
That's right.
Is a pawn shop able to move into B-two?
Into B-two? Uh, we don't list pawn shops specifically as a permitted use. Um, so we take the position, for the most part, that if a use is not permitted, it's not allowed because the code is a permissive code. Um, there's some debate about that because there's a general catch-all for retail sales, and one could argue that a pawn shop is a retail sale. So there are some things that we are hoping to clean up in our zoning ordinance update. But right now, um, we've, we've generally taken the position that they're not allowed.
Okay.
Um, Mayor Beth?
Yes.
There are two, um, tenants in this building.
Mm-hmm.
So would this apply to both tenants in the building? Or would you divide the, I mean-
Right, the zoning applies to the property itself, um, irrespective if, if there's a building on it or not.
So, the, um, I think it's a dance place?
It's a dance, it's a dan- they sell dancer and so forth.
Place, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So that zoning for that business would change also?
Well, the, in effect, yes. The zoning applies to the property and whatever is on the property. Um, there are retail sales that's permitted in B-two. It, I don't think that the changing the zoning would have any material effect on the business itself, but what it would do is change who could be located in the building with the business.
If they decided to relocate-
Mm-hmm.
-then the next business that moved in could do any of the allowed uses within B-two?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any other comments?
Where exactly is this property in regards to that apartment complex? It's on the other side of the road.
It's a, um, basically, um-
Is it a steady corner?
Northwest.
It's just a little bit north. If you, if, um, can you go back to the aerial towards the beginning of the presentation, please? Oh, you, there you go. Um, you can see, oh, this pointer work, yeah. Uh, right here is the avenue. That's the new project.
Okay. It's not really right across the street or anything.
No, it's just, it's just down a little way, yeah.
Okay.
It feels a lot closer, actually, when you're out there, but, but what, you know, we have, um, this building right here at the corner of, um, Main and Sullivan is getting renovated, or right here, excuse me, Main and, um, at Main Street and Sullivan is being renovated right now. This is a vacant property, which hopefully we, you know, will get redeveloped. I mean, I think that there's lots of opportunities to get investment in that area, especially now that we've got the avenue going and we've got some other projects going. We just want, um, the right projects to be downtown and to complement downtown.
So it sounds like a business that the city could use since we only have one other.
A mile away, but-
Right.
And, and there was actually, you approved a rezoning, uh, you may recall, I guess it was about a year ago now, um, maybe a little bit longer, um, that was at the corner of Waltryanna and Gillespie? It was a four-acre prop- I believe it's Gillespie. It's a four-acre property that got rezoned. Um, and the person who was the proponent of that was going to put a laundromat in that location. It's the same person who wants to put a laundromat here. And, um, and so we were a little surprised when this one came up because the laundromat at Waltryanna hasn't gone forward. But in that case, he'd have to build a whole new building, so it's probably easier to try and put a wa- a laundromat in an existing-
Okay, so, for our call for a vote, since we screwed this up or had to screw up in planning commission, I will make sure everybody understands. So, we had a motion for, the motion, you know, what is on the table is to vote for the rezoning. So if you agree with the rezoning, you vote yes. If you don't, you vote no.
And to follow up, I think the mayor asked this question, but if, if the vote doesn't pass, there is an opportunity to tighten up the language of B-one and B-two?
They could request to amend the zoning ordinance, and they could come up with some rough language. We would look at that and make suggestions ourselves, um, and they could come forward with that request if they wanted to.
Okay.
All right, that our call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Powell?
Nay.
Councilmember Spears?
Nay.
Councilmember Sh- President Shaw? Councilmember Roblesky? Councilmember Bartlet?
Nay.
Councilmember Denzine?
Nay.
Councilmember Seifert?
Nay. Motion fails.
All right, your next item is Proposed Ordinance Twenty-Twenty-One dash three-sixty-five, and this is to, uh, rezone property that is on Slaughter Road. It was part of that same PowerPoint. There we go. Um, and this is a request to rezone sixteen acres from R-one A to Ag. It's on the west side of Slaughter. And if we can go to the next slide, please? It's not working, yeah. So, um, just this afternoon, um, a little bit before three o'clock, uh, we received a request to continue this item to February fourteenth. Um, and, uh, just as, by way of background, um, the pla- at the planning commission meeting, which was held in November, we had a lot of public comment and a lot of concern about this property. As a result, the applicant held a community meeting nearby, uh, this property last week, last Thursday. Uh, we were not able to attend because it was a planning commission hearing night. Um, but as a result of that conversation, uh, the applicant, um, has decided that they just want to rezone a portion of the sixteen acres, which is this little piece right here. So this is three acres, this other piece is thirteen acres. So their initial request has been to rezone this entire property because it's owned by, it was owned by the same entity. So they acquired all sixteen acres, and normally, when we're looking at rezoning, we just rezone the whole thing. And so that's what they were requesting to do, to rezone it to Ag, to allow an assisted living facility with forty-eight beds. But again, as a result of the community meeting, they said, well, you know, we really only plan on putting this building in, on this three-acre parcel, so there's no need to rezone the rest of it. So their attorney, uh, notified us this afternoon that they'd like to continue the request, um, so that it can be re-advertised for just the three acres. Uh, so, um, we are recommending that you continue this item without opening the public hearing tonight. Um, as I mentioned, we had gotten a lot of interest from the community. Uh, we had received a lot of emails for the planning commission meeting. And so we reached out to all of those folks by email this afternoon, just saying that the request had been received. We couldn't guarantee that you all would continue it. We did let them know that there was a chance you might take action on the item tonight. Um, but we did let them know what the applicant was requesting and why. Um, so I don't know if there are people who would want to speak tonight, but we would recommend you, you hold off on the public hearing and just continue it till February fourteenth, and we'll readvertise.
Well, we do have, I know we have a couple of people that's been here for an hour and a half that wanted to speak specifically for that, but-
Okay.
I don't think that them-
So if you want, you can open the public, as long as they understand that we're not asking you to take action and that the request is being revised for just the three acres, um, and that will come back on February fourteenth. If you want to still open the public hearing, you may. Um, but then you would just reopen the public hearing on the fourteenth.
Would y'all like to speak tonight, or y'all want to come back on the fourteenth, or? Yeah, absolutely. You've sat here for an hour and a half, I hate to tell you. You can, I want to be respectful of your time also. Yeah, yeah. So, we'll, I'll open that in just one minute.
So you're telling us the revised request would leave the rest of it residential?
Yes, it would.
R-one?
Yes.
And then it's only the three acre, acre parcel that would be Ag?
That's what they're requesting, yes.
Okay, all right, I just want to understand what the revision is.
So we'll open the public hearing, and anyone like to address council? You can just give that card to Ms. Lisa whenever you get done.
Oh, I have, uh, the-
I think you have the card.
Uh, no, I gave it back to them.
Oh, okay.
You need the card from them on that? Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so, um, my name is Karen Dodge, and I live on Roy Drive. And, um, we are definitely against the rezoning regardless of whether it's sixteen or three acres. I'm afraid that, as with the downtown area, you know, allowing a rezoning eventually chips away bit by bit at the residential area. Um, I don't feel like that the best use of the land is to put a business in the little neighborhood, and it's backing up to people's homes, it's in their backyards. Um, there's also a concern about, um, the Mountain View Trailer Park and Storage Area that is directly across the street from this land on Slaughter Road. All of the trailers have been moved, the storage area emptied out. No idea what's going in there, so you would have two businesses coming out on two-lane road. Um, at the planning commission, um, meeting for rezoning, there was a fairly lengthy discussion about the fact that Slaughter Road is already, already very heavily trafficked and congested, and everyone was aware of it. They said that there was no immediate plans to resolve the issue. So I was wondering why the planning commission wanted to approve the rezoning when this is just going to add to the congestion of Slaughter. Um, and if it does get rezoned, you know, before, when there was the, um, I guess, changes to Slaughter Road by Highland Lakes subdivision that's going in just toward the Highland Lakes and the Zen Gardens apartments, that would shut down one lane of Slaughter Road in the afternoons. So people like me coming home from work, they're stuck in traffic for an hour, and I just work at Integra or Hexagon, takes me fifteen minutes. I'm now stuck in traffic. There's only so many ways to get to my area. Um, I would just ask, even if you're not voting this time, just to think about whether, if this was your neighborhood, if this was your backyard, if this was across the street or next to you, would you want a business placed there?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Just right here. Right here to clerk, Ms. Lisa.
Thank you. All right. You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We'll continue, but they've been here an hour and a half. I said they go ahead and talk.
Okay, okay. Absolutely.
Good evening.
Yes.
I'm Jim Hanson. I, I've lived down Roy Drive for thirty-one years now. Karen is my next-door neighbor. Um, and we, we came en masse to the November hearing at the planning commission and all voiced our opinion, which was all negative. And we would have been here en masse, which really would have been a fiasco since they've just blown it up. I'm going to go, go through the whole process again. We got the wind kicked out of us when we all got an invitation to meet their new, our new neighbors, this group, for a, a, a group meeting last Thursday. And it just seemed completely absurd that meet your new neighbors before the city council had even voted on rezoning. I'm very against changing the zoning from R-one to anything else. It's a small piece of property. Our community circles that. There's a nice little pond, that's, it's quiet, it's room, there's room for more houses. There was recent development fifteen years ago there. And I prefer that way over a business with a overlit parking lot, employees coming in and out, visitors to the residence. You know, it would be probably ten more traffic in and out of that little piece of property than if you had five or six homes built on the fifteen acres, which, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna have spaces. They did a, a traffic study right after the November hearing we went to in our street on, on Roy. And those markers, those trackers didn't- and those markers, those trackers didn't cover half of the houses on the street. So, you know, half, well, a third, quarter of the houses on one end wouldn't cross the marker because they can go off the backside of the neighborhood. Quarter of the houses on the east side weren't covered by the markers either, which is kind of interesting that you wouldn't want to track all the traffic. And then it made me think, is there going to be an exit through our neighborhood out of that property? Because getting onto Slaughter right now is an absolute nightmare. And you guys, I understand, you don't have full control. We've got Huntsville County and City of Madison who own, or have pieces of Slaughter Road, and there's no plans to improve the traffic, or the, the flow of traffic through there. It's just, I just think it would be a nightmare. Me personally, my living room, I'm retired now, so I'm in my living room a lot. I look directly south, which is right behind my neighbors that I see across the street. This is where this property is being developed. And I really would hate to see it go to a, a lit up parking lot and, and traffic that is already a, a congested area. So, I appreciate your time, and I guess we'll be back for this hearing again. Thank you.
Uh, so if you think that this goes re- residential instead of this, if they put thirty-five or forty houses on this, that's two cars per house. You don't think eighty cars coming in and out is going to be more traffic than this?
I'm saying, with, with this business, I think the traffic would be much higher.
Okay.
I mean, you've got employees coming in and out, and visitors coming in and out at, at all hours. It, it's not just the seven o'clock and four o'clock traffic, but it's a real nightmare on Slaughter.
Yes, sir.
You'd have it constantly, and you'd have it up into the evening.
Yes, sir. I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you all so much. So, we've got department reports. Let's start with the building.
Oh.
I need to close, I'm sorry. We gotta need to close. Oh, yeah, 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 I'm getting ahead of myself. So, is anybody else like to address counsel? If not, we will close the, uh, public hearing, and we need a motion to continue.
Make a motion to continue.
Motion second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski? Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert?
Aye. Motion passes.
And as Dustin comes up, keep coming, I can tell you that, uh, your councilwoman is already looking at traffic. She's working with Huntsville and Mat- and Madison County to have discussions on Slaughter Road. So, it's not just sitting there dead. It's not moving forward at the pace we all want it to, but at least we're having discussions to talk about what can be done. Just to let you know.
Thank you.
All right, what I've got is Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five dash R. It's awarding the bid, uh, for the dumpster services to BFI Waste Services, DBA Allied Waste, uh, Public Services, in the amount of seven eighty-four eighty-nine a month for the garbage dumpsters and seven eighty-four eighty-nine for recycling dumpsters.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski? Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Dustin. Engineering. Got more than the consent agenda I had tonight.
I know it.
All right, so I got four items for your consideration. Item number one is Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three R, um, requesting approval for professional services agreement with Garber in preparation of the joint replacement plans on the Madison Boulevard Bridge over Bradford Creek in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert?
Motion passes.
Item number two is Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-six R, requesting approval of change order number one in the amount of forty-eight thousand seventy-four dollars and thirty-nine cents for the Balch and Gillespie Roundabout, um, with wire grass.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion?
Um, what exactly is in this change order? Can you?
Yeah, I can.
Give a little quick discussion so everybody knows what we're approving?
So, when we were in construction, there were some items that came up once we had the road, um, fully closed, and in order to keep everything moving and not completely shut the contractor down, there were, um, four items that, well, there were five items. So, one was we had a plan bust as far as our elevation grades that we had to get a correction on. There was additional traffic control that was needed. We did inlet modification. There was additional excavation that was needed due to, um, some grade that wasn't adequate for the, the base of the new roadway, and then, uh, temporary striping was also added.
Okay, thank you.
That's a lot of technical kind of stuff right there.
Yeah. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert?
Motion passes.
Just ask her to bring pictures for you from now on, just so you know.
Uh, yeah, if y'all give me a coloring book too with some crayons, probably help me.
Uh, item number three I have is Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four R. It's requesting authorization to purchase a prefabricated storm water pump from Jim House and Associates in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Can, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President, I'm, sorry, Councilmember Seifert, excuse me.
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski? Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Motion passes.
So, item number four is Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash forty R. It's requesting approval of change order number three in the amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twelve cents for the short-street widening project with Rogers Group.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski? Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Before you go, Michelle, excuse me, could you just give us a quick update on Hughes? I was going to mention it during my comments before and forgot.
Right now, I'm still vetting through the utility conflicts. I've got them identified, but I've got to determine the, uh, in order to prepare a change order to request from the contractor.
Okay, thank you. I'm still getting all sorts of questions, so I, I promised I'd ask.
Thank you. And fire.
Just one item. I'd like to request your approval of Resolution number twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two oh thirty-eight R to authorize the purchase of a Bauer air compressor from Sunbelt Fire in the amount of, uh, sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents from the, uh, approved budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Can, can I get, is there any discussion? Not, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Thank you, Chief. Planning.
We've missed you.
All right. You have another. Pardon?
It's been a while.
It has. I missed you. Another presentation coming up soon. There we go. Your, uh, first item is Proposed Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash, um, thirty, and this is for vacation of utility and drainage easement. You can see it's called out there in, uh, red. This is just a first reading, so we're not asking for action, but, um, by way of background, we have a hotel project that's approved for this property, and, uh, the, this is a cleanup item. Um, their site plan has been approved. This is a property that is, um, right on Integra Way, just adjacent to the interstate, um, kind of behind the Advanced Auto Parts Store that's on Madison Boulevard. So, we'll be back for you, um, next meeting for approval, hopefully.
All right.
All right. The next item. Next slide, please. Thank you. Um, we have Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one dash R. This is to approve the Silver Apartments Site Plan. Um, this property is located at the southeast corner of Town Madison Boulevard and St. Louis Street. The property is just shy of twenty-eight acres. Um, that is the wrong aerial, but all right, we'll keep moving. Oh, I see what happened. Okay. So, here's the property. Um, and, uh, they are proposing three hundred and sixty-three apartment units. As you can see, sixty percent of them, uh, are one-bedroom, a little over thirty-five percent are two-bedroom, and four percent are three-bedroom. Uh, there are ten buildings, uh, overall within the project. There is a commercial component to this project, um, which is located in two buildings. Building one is the building that's at the corner of Town Madison Boulevard and St. Louis Street. Uh, the, I'll point it out to you right here. This is building one here. Um, and in this building, they have a, on the ground floor, there's a co-working space, uh, fitness area that's in the dark red area, and then the, uh, pinkish area includes cafe, clubroom, um, a commercial kitchen, uh, the administrative offices, lobby area, uh, mailroom, things of that nature. Um, the general public, as well as residents of this project, are able to buy memberships into the co-working space, um, so it functions like a, a WeWork kind of a concept. Uh, so when you buy a membership, you can participate, or you can use the fitness area, the co-working space. You can also use all of the, um, outdoor amenities, the commercial kitchen, the clubroom. So, basically, um, all of the ground floor there. Uh, and then the rec area is in that large blue square. Uh, there's a pool, outdoor cookout area, patios, and things of that nature. There's another commercial component, which is that, um, smaller, uh, red rectangle, uh, to the right, um, along St. Louis Street. And that consists of four live-work units. The commercial component of those live-work units is about thirty-six hundred square feet. The WeWork fitness area is about twenty-two thousand square feet. So, in total, the commercial component of the project is just shy of twenty-six thousand square feet. Uh, there are some other amenities in the project as well. Uh, there's a dog slash car wash. Um, there are bike racks throughout, and, uh, there'll be sidewalks throughout this, um, project as well. These are the elevations. Your, your action would be on the site plan. You're not actually approving the elevations, but we're providing them so you can have a sense of the character of the project. Uh, most of these buildings are a four-story, um, building. Um, however, there's, um, twenty units that are in a three-story product. Hey, my clicker's working. Um, the three-story units are right here, and these are all the, the four-story units. We have five remaining contingencies on this project. Um, as you know, with other site plans you've, um, considered, occasionally there are some cleanup items on the plans that have to be, um, taken care of before staff would be, um, asking Council President to sign and, and before different departments would sign off. So, we have five contingencies remaining. We've been working very closely with the applicant civil engineer, um, over the last several days, um, trying to resolve them. Uh, so we feel generally very good about the project and how the drainage works and all of that. Um, we're just very detail-oriented and have a few items that, um, we still want some additional details, and these are provided for you. They pertain to, um, primarily to detention, to the detention pond, which is right here. And with that, uh, we are available to answer questions, and we are recommending that you approve the site plan. Um, and before I close, I wanted to, um, let you know that Mr. Larry Silver, owner of the company that would be developing this project, is here with his team. Um, he is happy to answer any questions and just.
Keep going, keep turning.
All the way over there, Mr. Silver. So, um, he's happy to, you know, answer any questions that you may have, or go over his company if you would like.
Let's get a motion before we start discussion.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion?
You know, I, I, uh, I had some questions about the, um, the retention of, of water. We've had some issues there before. Um, one of the things we've, we've done in, in also, you know, the contingencies, where tonight we approved having some outside engineering, um, that, that helps with this. So, that, you know, having, having that expertise and the se- you know, separate set of eyes has kind of, um, changed my mind a little bit on it, and as long as we pass this with the contingency, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
I will say that our, um, engineering staff is very, very proficient when it comes to hydrology and hydraulics, and, um, for the number of meetings that we have had with the civil engineers, I feel very confident if our engineers are saying, this is all that's left, and we feel good about the project, we can move it forward to you for a decision, I feel very comfortable with that because we've had exhaustive conversations.
Yeah, and I, and I have as well, and, and those conversations were good. So, I'm, I'm confident that, that we're okay with, with water.
That was, I'm with engineering this one also, and everything, it looked, it looked great, especially with these contingencies, once we get them all buttoned up.
I have a question for Mr. Silver, if he's willing to come forward. Good evening. Um, I had a question because, uh, as we're growing in Madison and as we're being asked to, uh, approve hi- higher-density properties, one thing that I have seen other cities do is work with developers to provide a discounted rate for their first responders, like police and fire. Have you developed any properties where that was offered in other places?
We do it at all of them.
Fantastic.
It's a policy of ours to do that. Usually, we try to have a police officer living on site, so that's the goal everywhere, at a much discounted rate. And, uh, we're very sensitive and proud of what I heard here tonight of the first responders, and it's, it's great to, to hear that, and we are a supporter of that. So, it is, it is something. Um, and, and I thank you tonight for being allowed to be here, and to, if I can, I'd like to tell you a little bit about our company.
Sure.
I don't want to take a lot of time because I'm very respectful. So, uh, Mayor Finley and City Council, uh, Mary Beth and your staff, I really appreciate being here. We do have three executives other than myself from our company here, two from the Breland, Breland's Companies, and Jeff Mullins, who is also here. I want to correct, not correct, I want to add one thing. The three-story units are three little townhomes. So, that's why they're three stories, they're not walk-up apartments. It's freestanding townhomes that he will lease. All, we have been in business since nineteen forty-one. One thing I can assure you, that these prop- this property is called a Silver Collection Signature Series. We invest a lot of money in, in these projects, and this is not to say anything against any other project, but our goal, and we came to this community because of the demographics. It's very similar to other places that we have built in that are, ha- are, for example, Northern Virginia, near Washington DC, that has a lot of government contractors and, and government and military, and the income level. And we are going to bring a lifestyle that is equal to none in this whole community. Uh, so that's the reason for the large amenity facilities. There are memberships. Our tenants are required to belong, but also we, uh, try to bring in a lot of outside members. And it's really, uh, we give free breakfast, uh, continental breakfast every morning at these facilities, and we have full-time entertainment directors. So, it's really a wonderful place to live, work, and play, and a great amenity for here. The other thing I would like to mention is we build these to keep long-term. We keep these properties for decades. We are not in the business of building and flipping them. I'm not saying anything's wrong with that, but as you probably know, most apartments today are built by one group and a short time after they're sold. That's not what we're looking to do, and we look, we are hoping to become good corporate citizens, build several comm- projects here. We've, we've done a lot of other type of businesses. I would, would, uh, appreciate you going to our website under Silver Companies. There is one gentleman here who's known me for a long time. I, I didn't ask him to come here, but he happens to be here. here, but he happens to be here. You're welcome to ask him anything you want about us. I have no idea what he's going to say, but he was, did a great job in Ferbixburg, Virginia, my hometown, which we've done a lot of business in. We're headquartered in Florida today, but we're still very active there, and he was the head of the chamber there, so I'm, you, you are really fortunate to have Chip here in this community. I wanted to say that. Um, we, it's very important to us to give back to communities that we come to, and you will learn that if we become part of the City of Madison, we will be, uh, generous to the organizations that need help.
That's great to hear.
We're here to answer any other questions.
I do have one follow-up. Um, I wanted to make sure I was clear that, uh, I was not speaking of just a courtesy officer at one location. That is something that is common. Uh, what I'm really focused on is, uh, it, it's challenging to find housing, and particularly as prices go up, our police and fire, um, it, some developers do give a discounted rate for a certain number of units, so that it would help us with recruiting, it would help us with, uh, the salaries that they make to help them find housing and live in the communities that they serve and protect. So, I was talking about more than just a courtesy officer.
We will do that. I was just mentioning the courtesy officer.
Absolutely. Sure, absolutely. It's in your interest to have them there.
Hundred percent.
Thank you.
Very good.
Any other questions? We're here.
No, sir.
And thank you very much for giving us the opportunity, and for us to be able to become part of this community.
Absolutely.
Came myself, so to give the assurance of that, that we will be great corporate citizens.
And one of the few folks that's ever called and said, can we set up a meeting via Zoom where we can, in this case, it was Zoom, where you guys could talk and listen to who the fabric of the community is, you, you know, we, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know the answers to my own questions, but our lawyer does, and so she knew the answer to the question that he was going to ask, because it is critical to understand what's, what's important for Madison. So, knowing that you guys do take care of some of those things, your, your ratio of apartments that we talked about that's critical for us, so many one-bedroom versus three-bedroom, uh, and, and then the amenities that are there that we don't have, the workspace, and so I do appreciate the fact that you guys called and, and, um, and, and asked those questions as you were putting this together, which, and then, you know, you end in, in overcoming Chip and knowing, you know, I'm just, and knowing Chip again, and spoke highly of you guys to start with. So, thank you guys for your efforts.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? If not, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky. Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Motion passes. Kent with Public, Public Works, you're up. Corey, you're on deck, get ready.
The big one right here, Kent.
Yeah, man, you setting the record for tonight, buddy.
I have one for your consideration, resolution twenty twenty-two oh twelve dash R. It's awarding our bid for the asphalt paving in Mid-South, paving in the amount of approximately four million one ninety-one six fifty-one. It'll be paid from departmental budget. This is a three-year contract, so it's just out over three years, your city wants paving. Um, it'll not only be my budget, but it'll come out of, um, collector roads and neighborhood paving as well.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion?
I like the fact you specified it ain't coming out of your budget, and it ain't all this year.
Kent, am I correct in saying that this gives you more control in many instances over scheduling?
Correct.
Okay, and then I guess I'll ask the question everyone wants to know, would this include something like Highland Drive, and at what point, when that, when would that go?
As soon as we can make it happen.
As soon as you pass this and you're going to start working on it? All right, that's what I was hoping to hear.
Okay, you're my favorite person tonight. I'm, I'm so pleased to give the update about, I think Miller Mahon is still first before Highland, is that still?
They're all together, they'll go all.
It's all going to happen at once?
Mobilization in that area, so.
So, when would that occur if we approved this?
Weather's very much a factor in this time of year.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's, it's not, I can't put you a date on it, if you'd be disappointed, so.
Well, if you say anything past tomorrow, it's disappointing for us.
I ain't going to be this week, it's going to get cold.
It'll go as soon as we can, so.
Okay.
So, this also covers Hughes too, right?
Whatever we got money to pay.